The board of selectmen to order for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any guests on the public comment? All right. All right. I see Bob Kozlowski has joined us, Mr. Manfreda, Lieutenant Libertini. No comments from the audience, though, I don't think.
No.
And, okay, with that, I'll move on to item number three. Is there any late breaking correspondence? Okay, hearing none. We go to the first selectmen's report. I am going to cover just a couple of things. Number one, I'm going to give the same report that I gave to the Chamber of Commerce this morning. COVID numbers in our town have taken a dramatic turn for the better. There are two measures that we use. One is called the new cases per 100,000 population. A week ago, two weeks ago, that was about 10.6. Last week, it was 10.1, and since last week, it's dropped all the way down to 8.4. That is a very significant drop because this is a number that we track. And if it changes by two tenths of a point one way or other, that's usually a significant finding. So to go down by almost 20% is quite remarkable. Test positivity also dropped very dramatically. That has gone over a three-week period from 3.6% to 3.1, and then dropped last week to 2.4%. And this, of course, measures the number of positive tests versus all tests given on a given time period, all tests taken in a given time period. That number is a little bit less reliable. It will fluctuate because it's dependent on how many people get tested. So if only a few people get tested and a couple of them do test positive, it's going to make the number look artificially higher. So really, what we want to do is watch the new cases per 100,000 as the prime indicator. And if it stays this week, all the area CEOs, town CEOs had agreed a couple of months ago that when this mask mandate went into effect, that when the cases per 100,000 stayed below 10 for a two-week period, we would consider rescinding the mask mandate. So if all holds true when we get our numbers on Thursday, I plan to put it to cancel the order that put out the mask mandate. So far, the numbers look good, and so we're going to try to hope that that holds true and continues to go down. Several of the towns around us have done the same thing, so I think we're right on schedule with that. One other thing, a couple of very important new laws took effect on October 1st. One of them, and I'm glad that Chief Pumper is here. One of them is a mandatory seatbelt requirement for rear seat occupants. Now, most people thought that that was part of the original seatbelt law a long time ago, but it isn't. This is the town attorney calling. Feel free to tell me if he's ready.
He's trying to join.
He's trying to join. It's connecting.
Marty, are you on?
He says he's joining, but it's not connecting. I don't know.
He probably has to go out and try again.
She's letting you in.
She's charming. Tell him to try it again.
Oh, no. Okay, there you are. You're popping up. Okay. Yep, thanks, Marty. All right, sorry for the interruption. So in addition to the seatbelt law for rear seat passengers, then there's another one which is going to affect our police department or could, and that is buried in the massive 300-plus-page marijuana bill, the cannabis bill, is a prohibition on smoking within 25 feet of any building, any building that is accessible to the public. So not just government buildings, but this means any place of business that's open to the public. So this literally means that there's a 25-foot exclusion zone in front of all the restaurants and businesses on Greenwood Avenue for people who would otherwise be smoking on the sidewalk. And the way this happened was there was a lot of pressure within the legislative process from people who were opposed to legalizing cannabis. And...
Can anybody hear me?
Cannabis to be smoked anywhere near other...
Somebody else speak.
Okay, so yeah, we can hear you.
Somebody else speak. I don't hear...
Oh, I'm speaking. Can you tell?
Somebody say something.
I'm talking.
I don't hear anything at all. Great.
The New York Times is with us tonight. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. Anyway, there was a... Hey, Marty, if you can hear me, I don't think you can. Call him and tell him to just use his phone to dial in. Anyway, so smoking is no longer allowed anywhere near this building. We have some employees who are smokers. We used to go into the back, but now they will not be allowed to do so.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Another law took effect on October 1st. It's an age discrimination law.
I don't know what that is. How am I going to get to that?
Maybe we can use that. All right. Anyway, the age discrimination law makes it illegal for an employer to ask for an applicant's age. That's actually always been part of the law, but now it's also not permissible to ask for any identifying information that would point to an age, such as when did you graduate from college? Or when did you graduate from high school? What year? So that took effect October 1st. It doesn't necessarily affect the smallest businesses, but larger businesses are well-advised to take a look at that. I think it's called Public Act -21-6, so you can look up the language in that. So I'm sure you've had to scrub your application process. So that's all I have for the first selectmen's report. Do you guys have any...
Just a comment about there's no smoking. Are we going to post signs along Greenwood Avenue and all that saying, "No Smoking"?
Hadn't planned on it, but...
The question comes down to your department. How are you going to handle infractions?
It's more of the businesses would have to post it, and probably people aren't going to be aware of that law because it's new. It's more like just a warning-type thing at first, and if you don't comply, or we have to go back there again, someone makes a complaint, that's the way we handle it, you know?
Then the chamber, really, they should be posting signs in their windows, "No Smoking" 25 feet of this building.
Well, as I mentioned, I did have a talk on the Tuesday morning networking call with the chamber members this morning, so that made them aware of that, too.
I was going to say the same thing. So you'll talk to the chamber about maybe posting, then you'll do some posting around the townville, and then have the schools do, "Oh, there's no smoking anywhere at the school sites."
Yep, so that's the pot-smoking, regular smoke. Correct. All smoking materials, whether it's cannabis or tobacco or a cigarette or a pipe or a cigar, all of it. So chewing. I don't... I'm reading off here. Okay.
No chewing.
All right. I had a question about the COVID. How's things at the school? Are there any kids with...
You know, I don't have an up-to-date report. The last time I spoke with Dr. Carver, she was aware that there had been two cases in the high school, and that was several weeks ago. And I haven't heard of any since then, and they were unvaccinated in the villages.
I think there were two cases in the high school last week, and then there was an email that went out today that there was one in a middle school.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. Those are actually very low numbers because some schools have had whole classes shut down again, like last year.
It's been very sparse that we've notified of those cases.
And just one more question. I know all the communities are talking about the teachers getting vaccinated and all that. Do you have any idea what 10% this week?
I don't know, but I will find out for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So inquire about staff vaccination rates.
And you haven't put in anything that's affected the town employees, have you?
No.
No, I didn't.
Other than very strong words of encouragement. And I think we have in town hall, I think we're down to two, maybe three, who are still unvaccinated, but most of the, several of them have gotten vaccinated in recent weeks. Okay, any other comments? All right, before we move on, there are two motions I want to make to add to the agenda. Actually, the first one is not to add, but to modify item number 14. Due to my error in transmitting the information to DIA, that's listed as consideration of the ordinance, amending the ordinance to the tax abatement. It's not, it shouldn't say abatement. It should say tax deferral ordinance. And this was the public hearing we had several weeks ago. So I'm going to make a motion that we amend that item to read appropriately, "Consideration of Amending the Tax Deferral Ordinance." Your second?
Second.
Second. By Paul, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And item number two, or as item number 15, make a motion that we add to the agenda under item number 15, "Consideration of Uniform Purchasing Policy." Second by Rich, those in favor? Second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's added as number 15.
Okay, can I add something?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to add the discussion of the fire truck for Stony Hill.
Okay, so as item number 16?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. You want to second that, Paul?
Yeah, repeat it again. I didn't hear it.
Discussion of the fire truck for Stony Hill.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That carries. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, I'm going to read that as a discussion of Stony Hill fire truck proposal. Okay. All right, moving on. Item number five, consideration. We have two meetings to consider the minutes. The first is the regular meeting of September 7th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Sure.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any corrections?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And last indicated motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting of September 16th, 2021.
Second.
All right, so I made that motion. You seconded that. Any discussion or corrections?
No.
And those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number six. Very happy time. I am very pleased to announce that we will appoint our comptroller this evening, and Mr. Herring is with us. And I would like to turn the floor over to the Chair of the Board of Finance, Mr. Manfreda. And I see you are with us on the Zoom, on the Zoom channel, correct?
I am, Matt, yes. Well, thank you, and thank you, Rich and Paul. I am here with you tonight pursuant to Charter Section Cap C 8-13 Cap A, which requires the Board of Finance to make a recommendation to your board regarding the appointment of a comptroller. First, I'd like to start by just thanking Phyllis Kansky. Phyllis provided the Board of Finance with insight and expertise throughout what was a thorough search process. So thank you to Phyllis. We really could not have gotten it done as efficiently or as effectively without her help. You know, the process I had mentioned was a thorough process. It was, the job was posted on August 22nd. 13 resumes were received. The job, the applications were received through September 22nd, so the open period was over a month. Again, received 14 resumes. Excuse me, 13 resumes. Those 13, from those 13 resumes, three top candidates were selected, and a subcommittee of the Board of Finance met with those candidates. Actually, one of the top three candidates did not appear, so we did meet physically with two of the top three. From that process, the Board of Finance Subcommittee recommended to the Board of Finance unanimously that Brad Herring be the person recommended for the comptroller role. You know, and as it was reported in this morning's Danbury News Times by Kendra, thank you, Kendra, that is a recommendation of the Board of Finance to the Board of Selectmen that Brad Herring be selected as the, or appointed as the next comptroller of the town of Bethel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions for Bob?
No.
No.
Well, it gives me great pleasure, then, to put a motion on the floor that we accept the recommendation of the Board of Finance and hereby appoint Mr. Brad Herring to be the next comptroller of the town of Bethel effective immediately. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Brad.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Brad.
Bob, thank you very much for your work and the work of your subcommittee and your whole board. It's always a pleasure to have a unanimous decision on anything, which is rare, but especially on something as important as this. Is this a brand congratulations? Bob, Bob Kozlowski is with us. Did you want to add? I forgot to ask if you wanted to add any comments. You're muted.
Can't hear you, Bob.
Yes, I think that's an incredible selection. I, over the last three or four years, I brought Brad around to all the meetings. I think he's going to do an incredible job for the town of Bethel. I'm really happy by this announcement and appointment, and I wish him all the best of luck in the future.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments before we move on?
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Brad for all the hard work he's done for the past 10 years. Is it ready? I've watched you grow. I've watched you really fit well into the Board of Finance and the Comptroller's Office. So you're a natural. I really applaud you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
And I also, you know, have watched you grow even before that. It's amazing, though, time moves on, and so congratulations. Thank you.
Brad's in the meeting.
Brad's at the meeting?
Bob, you're not muted. All right. Well, thank you very much for the comments again, Brad. Congratulations. Yeah, welcome to the team, and you've been integral part of the team for a good long time, and I'm sure that we'll have a very smooth budget season, which I can't believe is coming up already.
I just have today, Matt.
Yeah. All right. All right. We scratched that last item. Well, we'll talk about that next week. All right, great. So I'm going to move on to item number seven, "Consideration of Funding for the Park and Recreation Department." Now, my colleague, I'll remind everybody that in our budget process, there was a great deal of discussion at the Board of Finance level about how much demand our Park and Rec Department would have for the programs that they run. Because, of course, those programs are largely self-funded. But even though they're self-funding, they have to be added into the budget. So the, remember, the Board of Finance discussed this very thoroughly, projecting that there would be reduced demand. And so they removed a lot of the funding, not all of it, but they reduced it substantially, but said, "If your enrollments start coming up, then come back to us, and we will consider putting that funding back because there's revenue that goes with it, so it'd be mill rate neutral." So that is beginning to happen. So Eileen, I don't have paperwork on that because I read, Brad, we're working on that right up until this afternoon, but Eileen, I would like to turn the floor over to you to give us an update on the enrollment and what your needs are to fulfill that enrollment with the revenue that's coming in. And by the way, just so you know, and I'm glad Bob Manfred is here with us, that request has to originate with the Board of Selectmen and then go back to the Board of Finance. So that's why we're taking that in this order. So Eileen, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, so basically, I'm here to ask you guys to request to the Board of Finance that they replace the $100,000 of program fees because our programs are starting to take off and are starting to show that people want to have programs. So just to give you an idea, our preschool program, which is in the gym and the municipal center on Mondays, presently have 135 kids in the fall session, which started about three or four weeks ago. We didn't reach 135 until March of last year, which was like 147. So we feel that that program will be growing as each day comes because now we do not have limits on the number of kids we can take, as well as people want to have their preschoolers in programs. We also are offering after-school programs, which are filling up with art, with like youth sports as well as art, which are going to, we plan to try to run every six weeks through the school year, and those have enrollment, you know, a higher enrollment as well. And then we have upcoming, is our basketball programs and our theater program, which presently has a fall program, but we would like to offer a spring one as well. So we're asking to have the funds put back. And I did a calculation on the income part of this, based on the income that we've taken in the last three months since July. If your average income that we've taken out would be like $52,300 average per month that we're taking in monthly for our programs. And if you multiply that by the rest of the months that are left, and what we've taken in, we've taken in $158,324 so far. If you add that together, we would be at $629,000, which is what we got taken in in 2019. So, and that's on the low end of the spectrum because last spring, April, May, were $88,000 and $74,000 we took in as income in those two months with camp registration and some other spring programs. So we feel that we're going to keep on having people wanting to do more. Our COVID rate is low. People want to get their kids active, back involved, being with other kids. So we're looking forward to that. Also, our before and after care programs are between 20 and 30 kids per school every morning and afternoon. So we're able to service more people out of that. The staff of that comes out of salaries, but the supplies come out of programs. And that's something we run from now until school gets out. So we feel confident that we would be able to make, get the income to cover the $100,000 when it was put back in. So I don't know if you need more numbers or...
So your request is for 100,000?
Yes.
And what, and the revenue so far, you're projecting the revenue to also come up to 100,000. Is that correct?
Yes. Presently, the, since the 100,000 was taken out, 100,000 was taken out of the revenue request. So it's like 525, and I am anticipating about 629 right now.
Okay, but so I'm comparing the 100,000 request to the additional revenue that's coming in. Is that an offset, or is it not quite, or is it more?
It's a little bit.
Pardon me, Eileen. So we budgeted as part of the revenue for the park and rec programs, 520,000.
Yeah.
So Eileen said that she anticipates that to be 620 plus.
Oh, okay.
So increasing the expenses by the 100,000 and the revenue, based on Eileen's latest numbers, we should be safe.
Okay.
To make it budget neutral.
Okay. Marty, I have a question for you. We've never really done anything like this before. So because I believe that we're modifying a budget in the middle of the fiscal year, you know, partway through the fiscal year. What is the mechanism that this would work? Aside, obviously, it has to go to the Board of Finance, but does it also have to go to a town meeting? You're muted.
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. It's over $50,000, and it's not part of the budget. It's a separate, it's a separate line, it's a separate item. Just as if they decided to come, you know, six months after the budget was passed and said, "We need more money." Same thing.
Okay.
Doesn't make any difference what the Board of Finance said in the beginning.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. But my question is, is this just considered like a separate purchase in a way? Or is it, does it actually modify the bottom line of the town budget?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Well, you know what? That's kind of a legal question that we can cover later. So the bottom line is we need to schedule a town meeting as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Last time we adjusted the budget after the budget season was fiscal year 2015.
Okay.
Because there's appropriation of revenue from the state of $265,000 that we put to the road account.
Right.
So we had a town meeting to increase the expenses by the $265 and the revenue by the $265.
Okay.
So the other option is you could do a transfer in from the fund balance if the Board of Finance didn't want to use the anticipated revenue. So there's mechanisms to use fund balance also.
Okay, great.
Eileen, let me just ask you one question. Is that $100,000 enough for the balance of the year, the fiscal year?
I believe it will be. It will, but I believe based on my request for the budget for this year.
I would assume that your department is, we're relaxing COVID somewhat, that the demand for park and rec is probably on the same plane going up. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. We definitely have seen an increase. You know, we're having, you know, some requests for some adult leagues, as well as possibly doing some more outdoor things as things happen in the spring. You know, so and the parks are being used a lot, and so I don't think, I think that we're on the upswing. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make the motion we accept a rather appropriate $100,000 for the park and rec department.
Okay. Second by Rich. So we have motion on the floor to request $100,000 via the Board of Finance, or to the Board of Finance, and schedule a town meeting to support the park and rec recreation program. Eileen, the one thing I would ask before we send this to the Board of Finance is that work with Brad and prepare a very thorough analysis of, you know, show the program enrollments and the revenue needs, or the programming needs, and then show the revenue that's coming in, project that out so that the Board of Finance members can see those numbers. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That carries. Eileen, what is your, what's your timeline on this? Like, are you constrained right now in terms of your programming?
No, because I still have funds in there, but we're at about between 35 and 40% of our, you know, budget spent. Some of it's been, you know, incorporated through some fees that have paid for camp that we don't have to pay in the spring. But it would limit us more. I don't want to say I would want to wait till January, but when we start our spring flyer, which goes out in the month of January, if we don't have the funding, then we would have to adjust what we offer come spring, which, end of February, March, April.
All right, there's time. I think we can wait till the Board of Finance votes before we set a town meeting date. That's fine.
Yeah, there's, yeah, because you could do that in November.
Yeah, because they meet next week, so that's...
Yeah.
No need to put that on right now. Okay, thank you very much, Eileen. Okay, thank you very much, Eileen.
Okay, thanks.
Item number eight, this is another new item. This is a request from the police department. Something that's been in the capital plan for a long time. This is the request to update the CAD and RMS software from the police department. And the request is a hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred. And this would be taken from capital non-recurring. And I'm going to turn the floor over to the, well, first of all, this, this, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the request and, and forward to the Board of Finance, and then we can open the floor for discussion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so that is, that motion is on the floor. Chief, why don't you give us the history of this? Because this has been on the radar for quite some time, I believe.
Yeah, so we've been, we have it in our capital budget now for probably the last five years. We keep on kicking it can down the road. Several different reasons. One of the biggest reasons is our number one priority is the police range.
Yeah.
So we always kind of put this behind that. Next gen, the, the current system we have now, we got back in Lieutenant Libertini, you're trying to figure it out today, it's either two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. At the time, the system we got, we thought they were going to be opening up more territory in northeast. They're from Chicago area. We thought other departments were going to kind of follow us. They gave us a great deal, we'd be one of the first in Connecticut. Well, it never panned out that any other departments in the whole northeast were the only one. So because of that, it's always a battle to get state of Connecticut forms into the computer system. It's, it's, it's a cost addition to what we normally have to do. So we've been looking at, there was two main players, Next Gen being one, and I forget the name of the other one we've looked at also. But Next Gen has a good portion of the state. I know Jamie's on there, she's from Next Gen actually. I'm going to say sixty to seventy percent of the state agencies, or these agencies use Next Gen.
And if I can interrupt for just a brief second, so just to educate the board on the chief's case. So to date, we serve a hundred and fifty-six out of the hundred and sixty-nine cities and towns with a Next Gen's application. But I'm going to not interrupt the chief, I just wanted to kind of make that statement. Sorry, chief, to interrupt you.
No worries. So more than the percentage I was saying. And the good thing about that is every time the state comes out with a new form, they have to update their system to have a state of Connecticut form. They're based in Connecticut. Most of their customers are in Connecticut. They, they recently branched out to Massachusetts. So their business is here, they need to keep all their Connecticut customers happy. Also, as an example, the, our accident report system that we have to do started about, let's see, seven years ago now. The accident reports that they have to do is electronic version. Well, our CAD system does not accept that accident report. The guys have to come in off the road into the computers that are in the station to do accident reports. It's not efficient, you know, something that can take ten minutes and I'm sitting in the cruiser at the accident scene. They have to finish the accident, wait for the tow truck, and have to go all the way to the station to do the accident report. Our current system can do it, but it's like a forty thousand dollar upgrade for us to get that done. And at this point, we didn't want to sink any more money into our current system. Another thing, the state is mandating, I believe, starting next year, that electronics have to be submitted electronically. I mean, tickets have to be submitted electronically. So right now, we go out, we write it, handwrite the ticket, and a fraction for speeding, goes to the station. They take it and they mail it to the state. Well, state's not accepting it anymore, we have to electronically enter it. This CAD system will allow us to do electronic tickets where you literally type in the tickets into the computer system. There's a printer in the car, print out a ticket. And you hand it to the person that goes directly to the state. After we review it, of course, then we just hit the send button. The state is mandating that next year. So either we have to do one of two things, pay our current system, upgrade their system to be able to do it, which is probably thirty or forty thousand dollars again. Or have someone manually enter the tickets so the state can get them, which is very time consuming and not a good way to pay someone records and do a lot of other things. So we've been looking at this product for a long time, probably ever since I've been captain, which is two thousand and thirteen, fifteen. Couple of years ago, we actually went down to their old headquarters. We spent a day down there demoing their product to make sure it's everything. Lieutenant Libertini, who's still here. Lieutenant Bryce, he's in charge of the detective bureau. Sergeant Christos has kind of been always around our CAD system, been involved in it. Maria Valenta from, or head of our records department, and myself. So when we first priced out this product, it was close to two hundred thousand dollars. Prices come down a little bit. And then just recently, they've been, we've been always in contact with each other. They gave us a deal, I'd say we, it's hard to refuse. It's all the way down to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. With the caveat that we signed the contract by the end of the year, which means we would have to move on it relatively quickly to make that happen. Between accepting it, Board of Finance accepting it, and then them drawing up a contract, having our attorney review it to make sure it's all good and getting it signed. It's not as big of a window we might think to get it done by the end of the year. So that's where we're at. We, because if it's in the capital budget next year, it was either one sixty, I want to say it was in there for one eighty, is what it was originally in there for. So on the sheet here, you can see the discount that they're offering us.
Do you have handouts for us?
Uh, just whatever you have, the quote. Oh, it's in the packet.
Right. I got two packets, I love them. Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I see it.
And then the other part of it is, after it gets up and running, there is a yearly maintenance cost. However, it's basically the same as we're already paying our current member. No increase in our operating budget with this. Obviously, over time, there will be, you know, like, like there is every year, they review the price. You know, two or three percent, you know, on average will be increasing cost to the maintenance. But as of right now, it's essentially the same cost as we're paying right now. And the other thing is the fire department should benefit greatly from this. Because they have software and things that they want to use that doesn't work with our current system. I don't even know the names of them offhand, Jamie might know. But there's things that the fire department has and wants to use, things that they're, they have in their cell phones. They can look at the calls, look at the things, doesn't integrate with our current system. Again, we wanted it to be a big cost.
Yeah, so presently, just to, just highlight on that as what the chief was just saying. So the fire department uses emergency reporting. We already have the interface, that's part of the application that we're providing to your agency. So it'll pass the CAD data straight over to their emergency reporting information. It's a push interface. We do them all the time to third-party applications such as FIRE for their empress reporting. The same thing is also on the other application that your agency is also using is the EMS charts for patient reporting on the medical side. So we'll actually push our CAD data over and feed that for them to do their ePCR reporting. A lot of the things that are certainly beneficial is that everything is electronic too, like the chief was saying. All the updates, the state forms, you're not paying extra because you're not one agency that's only with one vendor. It's hard to hold, like the chief said. Or demand anything from a vendor that only has one client in the state. So all of our state forms, they're automatic. If we have updates coming from the state, it's part of your service agreement that we update those forms inside the application. But I don't want to interrupt the chief. I just wanted to kind of highlight on some of those other benefits that those interfaces are automatically in your application, which gives a more communicative and collaborative effort as a joint effort, as a public safety service to the public.
Thank you.
She's saying a little better than I did. No, so the huge benefit to the fire departments, they've been kind of on me forever to try to get this to happen. So it'll be a great benefit to them and the paramedics. The last part she's talking about is like the charts, when they come back from the hospital, they fill out. It's going to be all integrated, so our information will go right to them. So it, it's going to efficiency, it's going to save money with efficiency as well.
How, how much impact is this going to have on staff time? You know, pot, in terms of reduction?
Great, the guys don't have to come to the station to do accident reports, first of all. The dispatchers don't, don't have to enter two or three different things, they just spits it all out. And another, this is really important, it might sound silly, but it's really important. When we do traffic stop, stops now, we have to do the racial profiling forms. We literally do it on a little piece of paper. Officers do it, and then they have to hand it in, we have to enter it again through the state and come back to the state. This here, it's all electronic, but you can't close out a traffic stop until that information is entered in. So.
All, all the blocks are still there.
Yeah, so things like that, just a lot, lot less paperwork they're going to have to do. And the state has available for, put back to electronic ticketing. The state supplies grants out there for the collectors for that. Because they want us to be electronic, to save on the paperwork and time. So we'll be able to print this with a card separate from this, probably in the state grant.
Do you think that there might be a measurable positive impact on overtime costs?
Yes, I don't think it would be dramatic, but it will save guys at the end of the day that might have to do some accident reports where they could do them in their cruiser. You know, at an accident scene, there's a lot of downtime, because you're waiting for the tow truck, you're waiting for people to get rides. They could be sitting there entering a lot of the information as they're sitting there and getting the report done, instead of maybe having to do it at the end of the day or having them come in off the road. But being able to stay on the road is important.
Yeah. Okay.
Chief, let me just ask you one, one question. The state's mandating all these things. Are they wanting to reimburse us in any form, or are they just saying, hey, mandate it? Pay it the cost?
Uh, never. Like I said, and I have the season availability of them, but there was a, a grant for the state, the, for the state, for the printers, because I wanted stuff electronically, that's something we'd have to look back into. But they're, they're not expensive either though, so. And then our computer, like our server upgrade is very minimal, but we have to, I said this, that, the specs, Senator IT people, it's something so minimal, we'd just be able to absorb in our operating budget.
So you'd be planning on having a printer in every car then, right?
Um, eventually, we'll see, you know, we'll start with some and then go from there, you know? Something we have to look into, something maybe if the state's not giving us grant that we add into the budget to a year or something like that. But.
You guys are on top of that looking at the grant.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And also too, on the, the e-ticket aspect, since that was part of the focus today, is that our system actually goes out and checks the state automatically behind the scenes and downloads any new state fines or statutes that are associated with e-ticket. So it makes it very easier for the officer, especially when they're on the side of the road, being able to disperse a ticket quickly to avoid officers getting hit on the side of the road when they're pulling a car over is very important. So e-ticket is a great asset to not only the public safety, but also to the officer that's, you know, issuing the violation. There's just, it's about roughly, an officer can, cause of the automation that's inside the Next Gen application, it allows them to write a ticket pretty much in like about three to five minutes. So it's a massive improvement than handwriting and potentially having the officer hit. And most importantly, they can get back into the routine patrol and continue to keep doing proactive police working, so.
Thank you. Just by, by comparison, what does it take to write a ticket manually today?
You could handwrite, it's literally.
Probably about fifteen minutes, right?
And you gotta go in a little book and look up the fines.
Yep.
The typical levels of speed and it's, it's.
That would all be programmed in the app.
Yeah, all programmed into the CAD system. And this is all, it's in the actual car computers and what the CAD systems works with, with the dispatch sends out calls.
Next, we'll, next we'll be giving your credit card and pay the fine, right?
Oh, I'm sure they don't want to have anything.
Uh, well, actually, to be honest, there is a part of the application that we're, we're not asking the public for a credit card then. But actually, if they were involved in an accident, which is normal, right? Instead of coming down to the station, if they don't have the, you know, if you're involved in an accident, your vehicle could have gotten towed. Or you just don't have the ability to come down, maybe you don't live in the town of Bethel, but you got into an accident in the town. They can actually request, like, there's a e-commerce part of the application, which means whatever fees you charge a PR one, it's the accident form. They can actually download it immediately from, like, a website. They have to put in a case number and everything, it's our partnership, it's part of the application with LexisNexis. There's no additional charge to you, but you're cut your check once a month from LexisNexis for any of the fees that are generated for retrieving like an accident report too as well. Just another automation process and making it easier for the public is, is really what it comes down to. Some of the other just highlights that are really important for public safety too. There's a lot of capability in the CAD system, which is, is not today what they have as far as what they're utilizing. So prime example, especially with today's society, firearm permitting inside the application. If a resident actually fills out, you know, requests for a firearm permit, it'll automatically create an alert on that address for the officer that there's weapons at that location. So it's just another level of safety. I just wanted to kind of highlight on that because those alerts can be multiple things. It doesn't have to be weapons, it could be an autistic resident, it could be, don't approach the house with sirens, you know, a mental health issue. Those are alerts that can be triggered automatically on, on a premise address, and the officer knows when they're actually arriving to the scene. So just some of the public health and wellness too, as well as not only protecting the officer, but also being a better service to the community.
Are some of those things, uh, voice activated, so the officer doesn't have to punch it in?
Uh, it's automatically, so when the dispatcher dispatches the call, it automatically comes up on their MDT. So the MDT's, yeah. And it's a two-way communication feed, which is going to make things a lot easier for the dispatchers and the officers. So the dispatcher can still be on the line with the call taker and continue to update the officer as they're arriving to the scene. So a simple example is, the call could have come in for a no.
We might have lost you.
No.
Yeah, well, that, that's what happens, that's what looks like when the line drops.
So, oh, so go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Just real quick, another big part of this I kind of put out, I'll, we'll skip out any questions is the way we report crime too, the neighbors. We have all kinds of issues with our current system. The state rejects a lot of it, we get it back, we have, very time consuming. Next Gen, obviously, is the state of Connecticut agency, will work, works with the state, our state all the time. The other state, we're, George Bryce and Courtney Whaley were on the phone for two hours today, trying to figure out stuff with the neighbors, crime reporting to the FBI. Was it integrating with the state through our system? And they're always having issues fixing it, so this, we'll take care of that too as well.
Our whole application is built around neighbors, and it actually will show the end user where corrections need to be made if, if there's like an error in the neighbors, if they forgot to enter a field, it actually will highlight it for the officer and give them the dropdown as far as where they need to correct that. So instead of a lot of agencies that are using, you know, like a different application, it seems to always just kind of shovel into records, and then records has to kind of triage what occurred. So it's much better to have it on the forefront and allow the neighbors and the officer to, when they're submitting. And there's a whole case management, which makes more productivity for the officers and the agency as far as workflow aspect too as well. It's all done electronically, less printing, less carbon footprint as well. Because all your reports are electronically signed, and that's authorized by the state of Connecticut because we designed the e-signature aspect for them, actually, a couple of years back.
I'm actually going to modify my motion to read, to be applied to either capital non-recurring or ARPA funds. applied to either capital non-recurring or ARPA funds, if appropriate. Because I, I look at this as being a public safety component, and also a reduction of contact between people, which may fit in there. Uh, it, it's not a determination we can make tonight, but I just wanted to leave that door open for future consideration, if it's appropriate. So, did you, will you second? Okay. So, I, I know I'm gonna mess up your report, Brad, but. Any other comments or questions for the chief? Right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve and send to the Board of Finance for their consideration, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you very much, chief, and thank you very much, appreciate you being here with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me, and, uh, look forward to potentially working with everybody real soon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Not, not if it's, uh, C and R.
Right.
Or, uh, yeah, either one.
Either, yeah, either one.
We're good, alright.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, alright, item number nine, now I'll turn the floor over to Brad, thanks for coming. Discussion of the American.
Thank you for having me.
Update.
I will be quick, uh, so, the main update we have is two things. Eileen is working on getting a couple quotes for the Parlo Park, to get it to the point that we can bid it. Uh, she got one quote from the company that, I don't remember their current name, but they were in the London Room. Parking rent studies, and they gave us one price, um, it's in the seventy thousand dollar range. So when I heard that, $1,000, I said we need to go out and get another quote. Um, so she's working on getting that. Um, and then I did get an update from Janice Christianic today. As of today, they've received twenty-six applications for the small business, uh, program. Of which the request is for a hundred, just under a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, people have until October twenty-second to apply, so she assumes it'll be more. And that's pretty much our, our, our update at this point.
And, and how much, what's the total of those applications?
Uh, one, two, one, nine, seven, six, so a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, and we allocated three fifty, correct?
Correct. So most of them have been for the full five thousand.
Yeah.
But, a couple have not.
Okay.
Because we're not really looking at a lot of the other ARPA stuff right now, because we wanna our lower pieces, and to see if there's any money left over from the small business assistance program. Um, but we did get a price to scan all the files and building inspection. We initially had talked about possibly hiring people part-time to scan it. Uh, the initial price we got was just under eighty thousand dollars to just do the building inspection. The company is working on getting us a little bit sharper in a quote, to add in like the P and Z piece. So, our, the ARPA committee's gotta meet again soon to look at that. Cause the other piece of it could be, we'll need more licenses for laser fish, which makes it the searchable. And there's no point scanning it, if you can't then search the document. So, the company that gave us that quote was ScanOptics, which did a ton of scanning for the state, so that state did. So we'll meet on that soon, to look at that, but we're just waiting for a couple of their numbers from ScanOptics.
So they would come in and do the whole thing, we wouldn't have.
They would, they would come in, they would box everything, label all the boxes, give us a file that says here's everything we took, and the file numbers. So that, like, somebody comes in and says, you need to see the plan from your house, Rich, and it hasn't been scanned yet. They'll go in, Chris will tell them which file they need scanned, they'll go in and scan that box within twenty-four hours. So then, they'd have access to it. Um, and then the discussion would be, what do we do with the files afterwards? So, some of that stuff we still have to iron out, of how we wanna handle that.
Sometimes you always wanna save the picker.
Uh, but last time we looked at having it scanned, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, um, this seems like a much better deal, it's, it's the same.
And we don't have to hire a extra personnel to.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah, and obviously it'd be done, I think they get, that'd be about six weeks, for once they start scanning to have all their files.
If we hired somebody to do it, it'd take years.
Yeah, yeah, so. Uh, so that's our, our update for today.
So you, you, they're checking out what planning and zoning would add to it, what about?
I think he said about ten thousand.
How about anybody else in the, in the building?
We haven't.
Lisa or tax successor?
Uh, so we haven't looked at health, we haven't looked at those pieces. Um, right now, we're just kind of getting a price on those. Um, one of the things that the company did say, is that we're sure, or we're pretty sure we're gonna do it then, is we do a filing cabinet as a test, and agree to pay for the filing cabinet amount. But have them come to a filing cabinet amount, make sure we like it all, and then interact the way we want it to, so. Um, and yes, at some point, we could look at, maybe we just pay to have the rest of the history done for the town clerk, and then, instead of having them do a year or two at a time, so.
And it gets it done much quicker too.
Yeah, I, I am thrilled that we're finally entering the late, later half of the twentieth century, and getting closer to the twenty-first century. Cause these are things that save tremendous amounts of staff time and salary o- over time.
Just what the chief was talking about, he's gonna say that.
Yeah, it's an efficiency tool that, uh, that pays dividends and helps keep the budget lower. So, uh, this is, this is a wonderful thing, alright, any, any other questions for Brad? Alright, thank you very much for that. Uh, we'll move on to item number ten, this is a request for approval of accepting a grant from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. Uh, this is the second part of, of, uh, the grant period. So Laura is requesting that we accept the grant for period two, it's called the Budget Period Two. For the, um, it's called the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Enhanced, the Enhancing Detection Cooperative Agreement for the Enhanced Detection Response Surveillance and Prevention of COVID-nineteen. Basically, these are funds that are available to us to offset the cost of hiring people, like the nurses, the contact tracers, the telephone people. Uh, the outreach that Laura has to do with, with other part-time staff, like visiting nurses to respond to the COVID crisis and to treat people in the field. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve acceptance of this at the amount of forty-two thousand, uh, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Okay, any questions?
No.
That's great. Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. That carries. Uh, item number eleven, consideration of an eight-twenty-four, um, referral from Planning and Zoning. Find the paperwork here, uh, basically, EverSource has requested a easement, uh, to put a, to brace a utility pole um, on a, on a small piece of property off of Honey Hollow Drive. Uh, we sent this to Planning and Zoning many months ago, this went back all the way to, uh, November of twenty-twenty. And, uh, Planning and Zoning did respond, and somehow the communication never made it to us. So, this is just sort of hanging on, uh, but I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we, uh, approve granting the easement to EverSource, uh, at, at the corner of three oh two and Honey Hollow Road, for the purpose of securing the, uh, utility pole.
Second.
Any, any questions?
Is this for, like, on the side of the road, is, they're creating a gravel access?
It's not only a, is that public property or is it private property?
No, it's, it's, it's town property, it's like within the town right away.
It's, is it for, you know, like, a, a pole on the side of the road, or is it to get down in the back of the, the big poles down there?
Uh, it's, my understanding, it's not a pole, it's a bracing pole.
It's forty bridge.
Yep. Alright, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. Page here, oh, um. It came to my attention that, um, under state statutes, and I can't remember, uh, the statute number, but uh, our municipal agent for the elderly is a position that is required under state statute. Uh, every town must appoint a person, uh, with certain qualifications. Uh, our senior center director, Lisa Plum, has held this position for some time, and it's time to reappoint her, because her term has expired, under state law, the agent must be appointed to either a two or four-year term. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we, again, appoint this Lisa Plum to the position of municipal agent for the elderly for another four-year term.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Lisa did a wonderful job.
Yes, she does, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, that carries. Item thirteen, um, this is an item I'm putting on the table for you gentlemen tonight, but uh, do not expect to vote on it, in fact, I would, I would prefer not to. This is a discussion, this is introduction of what I'm calling a, a new committee, which I'm calling Sustainable Bethel. Now, as you will remember, oh, going back eleven years ago, we created the Energy Conservation Committee. And it has done marvelous work, uh, we were one of the first, uh, we were one of the first, I think, the first six towns in Connecticut to successfully launch a, uh, a community solar farm to, uh, reduce carbon emissions and also reduce the, the utility budget for taxpayers. Uh, we, they have been instrumental in putting solar, uh, on, on the, the new schools. Refurbish schools and the new track field center, they've come forward with several other proposals too. Uh, but what I'm proposing is that we, we dissolve the energy committee as it exists today. And then reconstitute a sustainability committee that will incorporate energy plus other things, such as land conservation. Uh, stewardship, um, uh, electric charging stations, other forms of renewable energy. So basically, we're just going to, um, kind of create a, a, a new committee that, uh, that carries that role plus more, and then we dovetail with the Sustainable Connecticut effort. Uh, and you guys will probably, you, you may not, may have forgotten, but we actually joined Sustainable CT a couple of years ago, but it was too large of a ta- task for staff to handle internally. So we're gonna need the help of volunteers, and since I've been talking this up around town a little bit, I've already had three volunteers call up and say, count me in, I'd like to be a part of this. So, uh, we'd like to, uh, just put this on the table for your consideration, and then perhaps we could discuss it more thoroughly, and if you have any other suggestions, we could vote on it at the next meeting.
Now, I'd just like to discuss, just taking a look at the goals and objectives.
Yeah.
This is very, very broad, you're including housing, transportation, tourism, uh, energy com- I understand the energy side, assumption and efficiencies, and managing waste, waste and recycling, that's, that's always an issue. And environmental preservation. But the housing and transportation and tourism, it's, uh, you're, it's really a very broad thing that this committee will have to do. Should, should it be, should we break it down into two, I'm just, just throwing things out there.
Well, uh, you know what I'll do, uh, that's a, that's a great question, that you brought that up. I will download for you the, uh, the other materials from Sustainable T, uh, CT. Because some of these things we're already doing, ironically. Uh, such as, and we would get credit for it, it, toward a recognition, an official state recognition that Bethel is a, you know, certified sustainable community, but just to give you the idea for, uh, tourism, uh, you know, the Bethel Historical Society has gone around, uh, over the last few years, they've set up those historical markers with a description of the building.
Right.
That's it, I mean, the committee would literally have to catalog that, take pictures of it, and say, this is our contribution to the tourism. You know, to get points to do that. Same thing with transportation, the fact that we, uh, launched for the first time a couple of years ago, a senior center van. To, uh, help transport people who don't have transportation, to doctor's offices and things, that's a qualification right there. So some of these things are very, very simple, um, putting in, uh, re- or even refurbishing the electric, uh, vehicles, charging stations, things like that.
Yeah, we know that's coming.
Yeah, right.
You know, I, like I said, we're gonna talk about this a lot more, but I, I think the energy, uh, committee has a, a lot on its plate right now. And that, I, I maybe agree with Paul there, that maybe we should have, can we have two?
Sure.
Committees?
Sure.
Because, I mean, they got a lot going on, you know, with the solar panels, uh, on the school buildings, and, and other buildings they're looking at. You know, they're talking about the, um, microgrid of the school, uh, complex, so they have a lot on their plate right now, I, I, I know.
Well, uh, I, I agree with that, and, and one of the things I think we have to look at is perhaps asking some people to step aside, because one of the things that, when, when I talk to, uh, to Sonny, Malconni, and to Bill Crati. Uh, the vice chair and chair, is that they have, there are many meetings that they're unable to vote on, it's because they have no power.
Correct, exactly.
So, uh, maybe, maybe that's a different solution.
Yeah.
So, um, really good suggestions, I just wanted to introduce the topic tonight, let you guys have, have a couple of weeks to talk it over. And I, uh, I'm definitely open to that suggestion as well, I think that's a, that's a good idea. Okay, any other questions on that?
No.
Okay, so that was a report item, so we'll move on to item number fourteen. Uh, consideration of the, uh, amendment to the tax deferral ordinance. Uh, now, if you recall, we had a public hearing on that ordinance, uh, about three weeks ago, and we had no input. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the changes that were submitted that evening. Uh, re- re- approve the amendments that ordinance without any further changes.
Okay.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
I'm gonna abstain because I would.
Okay, alright, so Rich will abstain, uh, so I'll try to remind those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is two in favor and one abstention. Item number fifteen, the new item, uh, consideration of the town, uh, Town and Bethel Uniform Guidance uh, per, uniform purchasing policy addendum, and Brad, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'm gonna do a quick rundown on that. When we had a kickoff meeting with the auditors this year, they asked if we had adopted it yet, and if you look at that document uh, they've got a state statute right in the talks about the CFR section two hundred dot three twenty, two hundred dot three twenty-seven. Pretty much the au- the auditor gave us this form, said put Town and Bethel into it. Vote on this exact language, because that's right from the state statute. And what this does, other than gives us an additional policy to go like what, um, makes it so they don't have to audit stuff as much. So it's gonna save us money on the audit, if you don't have this policy, they have to do more selections when they're auditing. And obviously, the more selections they do, the more time it takes, the more money they charge us. So, we didn't make any changes to it, other than just put Town and Bethel in.
Um, hey Marty, are you on? If you can unmute, I got a question for you.
You're muted.
I can't hear you.
Okay.
Marty, does, can we adopt this as a policy, or does this have to become an ordinance?
I have no idea what it is. I've never, a copy of it, it wasn't. I, I, I can't answer that, man.
Alright, well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, I, I'm gonna put most of the floor that we, um, forward this to, to the town attorney for his, uh, counsel on, on whether this, uh, on how to properly account for this, whether it needs to be an ordinance or a or just adopted as a, as a, as a financial policy, okay? Cause you know, Brad, you, you, we don't need this until, we've been next audit, correct?
Uh, the audit goes until December thirty-first or something, we have some time.
Alright, so is there a second for that?
Second.
Yeah, go ahead. You guys get it first.
Oh, we'll get it first, okay.
I, I, I suspect this is just, this is a federal law that is consistent with state statute, but we'll, we'll just have Ted, the town attorney review it, and then we'll put it on the next agenda, which is only two weeks, so that, that shouldn't be a problem. Right, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, that carries. So we are at, uh, new item, number sixteen, and I'll turn the floor over to Rich.
Uh, yeah, um. And, uh, the fire truck was on their agenda for discussion. They wanted some more comments from the fire commission, the fire commission that earlier, uh, that evening. Um, but I did not forward a, a report, since then, the chairman, uh, Brown, um, forwarded a report to the, uh, Board of Finance. And basically, you know, it, he said that, you know, it, it was a, a new item, the committee hadn't had a lot of time to look at it. But basically, was still in favor of buying the truck, uh, in my opinion. Uh, the vote was four to one to purchase the truck. Uh the vote was four to one to purchase the truck. Uh that came to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen requested the uh we voted on it unanimously to send it to the board of finance. Um in my opinion, with the time sensitive thing, I don't know if the truck's even available anywhere.
Um yeah, I yeah, I I sent a message a while ago to to Tom Gallagher to ask if it was still there, but I guess
So I'm I'm hoping um that we could send another message to the board of finance of saying that we're in support of getting that truck.
Why did the board of finance vote on this? I thought they were against
They they didn't put it on the agenda.
It has not been on the agenda yet.
Can we pass the ground on the agenda?
We will put a motion on the floor.
I'll put that motion on the floor. If you quit uh pass the board of finance, consider the fire truck. We're starting to build the ladder truck. The quint, yeah.
Okay, do you want to put a timeframe on that?
I would say by the next meeting. And the thing is that we we've been here sitting as part of our board of selectmen.
Marty, can you mute yourself? Never mind.
But we've we've been sitting through bu- various budget seasons. There's always been a request for that. And you know, needless to say, we we're here sitting watching uh Stony Hill grow. And we know what the, it's not the ladder distance up, it's you know, from the truck, from the road to the buildings that you really need. And you know, if we're concerned about safety, now some people said, well, we only need one fire tr- uh one ladder truck in Bethel. Uh uh that's debatable. I leave that up to the fire commission. That's what we've gone for. If they say that we need it, fine, let's pursue it. But you know, I I don't think uh the board of finances' role is to say, yes, we have the money. No, we don't have the money. They're not in a position to say, we don't need a truck.
I I agree with you a hundred percent. Yeah, and I I have uh because I went to the board of finance meeting uh a couple of weeks ago and I anticipated that it was gonna be on the agenda, I submitted a letter. And I outlined all the buildings that are out there. There's uh two healthcare facilities. There is three motels out there.
Right.
You got Durisol, you got Target, you got the condos across from the firehouse.
Right.
And there's three major building projects that are on the table out there. Hundreds of apartments, four stories they're talking about now.
No.
Yes, they have to be sprinkled, but it's a different type of sprinklers. They only have to sprinkle the living space. They don't have to do bathrooms. They don't have to do closets. They don't have to do the attic. So the attic can burn, the roof could burn off the building as long as the people can get out.
You know, it's a safety thing.
It it is.
It's strictly a safety thing. And as the town has grown, this is the twenty-first century, uh you know, as I said, our role is to improve it and 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 to send it to the people, okay? And if it's required. I don't think it's required. Is it?
Yeah, we because it's the amount of money.
Okay, that's right. All right, fine.
Unless we can take it through the
Thing is that we have to move on this. I've heard this too long. You, all all three of us have have heard this. And every budget season, every every chief has been that Stony Hills is, we need it.
Yeah.
I can count three chiefs in my mind, so we need it. Uh enough of this uh storm walling.
Um so Marty, Marty, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I under the understanding, I haven't read it myself. I need to go through it. But somewhere in the charter, the doesn't it say that if the board of selectmen uh moves something to the board of finance, they have to act upon it one way or the other?
Well, it it doesn't come right out and say they have to act upon it, but yeah, the board of selectmen pass it on to the board of finance. And just just by just common sense, the board of finance has to act on it. They can't, they can't ignore it. You know, I agree with what what everybody's been saying here that well, once it's gone from the board of selectmen to the board of finance, it's up to the board of finance to make a decision as to whether or not the funds are available and where they're gonna come from in order to fund the project or not. They don't have the authority to say, we don't think we should have it. That's not up to them. You know, it's just whether or not it can be funded or not. That's it.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor to uh support a resolution of a request to the board of finance that they act on if by their next
Right.
Right? Okay, any other comments?
No, no.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. McCarries.
You're trying to spend the ARPA money.
All right, I'll I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
McCarries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Dion.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Um I have promised to come to the first meeting there and come to update you guys on our books, so.